Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 26, 2018 meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council. I'd like to open our meeting tonight by thanking the many men and women in law enforcement, in particular, the Sacramento Sheriff's Department and the District Attorney's Crime Lab, for their tireless efforts over the last two decades, which led to the capture of the most of the east-area rapists here in Citrus Heights. Of course, it's not the national spotlight one would hope for, but I do hope, in all seriousness, this brings some closure, comfort, and peace to the victims and their families. And with that, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Mr. Daniels, would you lead us?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Fox.
Yes.
Councilmember Slowey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bruins.
Present.
And Mayor Miller.
Present.
Tonight's meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replay is on Sunday, April 29 at 8:00 p.m., and again on Monday, April 30 at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Ms. Van. Next, we have approval of agenda.
Mayor, can I ask that we move item 12 up to be heard right after the consent calendar?
Item 12. Any objections to that?
Let me see what that is.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thirteen. Thirteen.
Thirteen. Okay. So, you'll make that into motion?
That's my motion.
Okay. Any second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Next item, please.
Okay. The next item is number four, proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming the week of April 15 through 21, 2018 as National Volunteer Week.
Okay, and I've handed the duties of presenting the proclamation to Councilmember Daniels.
And we have a presentation just prior to the presentation of the proclamation.
Good evening, Mayor members of the council. My name is Sandy Moravio. I'm the Support Services Manager for the Police Department. This is Barbara Allen, who's our volunteer coordinator for the Police Department. And I am here to say that this is a great evening, and it's great to see all the chairs filled up, so we probably should do this every couple weeks, don't you think? So, we're here tonight to celebrate our volunteers, which is probably the majority of you in the audience tonight. So, we're gonna do a little presentation, and we'll call the volunteers up by your work groups, and then Councilmember Daniels will do the proclamation. So, to start out, every year, the second week of April, and this year was April 15 through the 22nd, is National Volunteer Week. I would be remiss to not share that it's, there's so many volunteers in this community. We know about the ones that we know about, but as I learned earlier today in our study session, another volunteer group came to mind, it's the Meals on Wheels folks. So, there's so many more, but we're here to recognize the ones that we're aware of and the ones that we work with regularly. So, as you can see on the slide, we have volunteers that work at City Hall, the Community Center, the Police Department. We have our Planning Commission, there's various advisory boards, our Neighborhood Associations, and Reach, who are extremely active, as well as our business groups. We have ABBA, S&amp;P, Antelope Crossing, Progressive Employment Works with the people that are disabled, and we have a great partnership with them. We have the Parade Committee, the Library, the Marching Band, huge, huge part of our community. And then, of course, our service clubs, which all of us work closely with, Rotary, American Legion, Heart, Serroptimus, Lions, Kiwanis, the Women's Club, and probably several more that I don't have up on the slide, but those are examples of the service clubs we work with regularly. And then, of course, we have our Animal Services volunteers. Most of them are helping with our cat rescues, and so many more. As I said earlier, we just realized, in listening to everybody and talking to people outside, that there's just so many more people that volunteer in this community. I wanted to share the 2017 highlights. We had 22 volunteers receive their 1,000-hour merit pins, so that's their volunteerism last year, and that's a pretty good-sized group. We've had 32 volunteer organizations represented that we've been in contact throughout the year. Our Community Center volunteers worked 37.5 hours a week doing administrative duties, working in the senior center and conducting tours of the Community Center. The City Hall is expanding their program. Last year and this year, we're starting, and Haley Reed now is the city's volunteer coordinator, so she's getting ready to ramp up the city-side volunteers to enhance the work that goes on campus. So, really excited about that. She was not able to be here tonight, but she will be highly involved in these events as we move forward. So, I believe in our police presentation, the chief had mentioned that the Bureau of Labor Statistics estimates the value of volunteer to be 26.87 cents dollars per hour. And we actually, between the city, the Community Center, and the Police Department, this doesn't include all the service clubs that are out in the community, but we had 18,162 hours for 2017, which brings a total value of 488,000. So, it's quite a commitment for all of you to spend your time working with us and helping your community and this community grow and become a great place to live, play, work, and socialize, of course. So, we're real proud of that, and that's a great number, and it's humbling to see that we're doing such great work with you. So, the Police Department Statistics, just wanted to highlight a few of the events, or the few things that we do. We did over 30 events last year that the volunteers worked at. They do our live scans, there was 866 of them. Parking citations, you can see almost 400. We have Project Lifesaver clients that we manage and change batteries and help keep track of people that tend to wander. Our volunteers manage that program. Excuse me. We do radar trailer deployments. Dom, that you met earlier, and Mark, they go out three or four days a week, and they remove the signs off of the poles that people leave, and kind of the blight signs are, the signs that you see people put into the ground that they're advertising. That's a regular part of their week, so they manage that to handle the blight that happens with those signs. We do tours, vehicle abatement. We abated 1,204 vehicles in the 12-month period last year, and those are for you in the neighborhoods that have those cars that are sitting, that have been there for a long time, that don't run. We take that very seriously, because we know our community members do. So, our volunteer program 100% handles all of those. Our goal is to gain compliance, but if they don't get compliance, they will actually also tow the vehicles to get them out of the neighborhood. And then, of course, we do vacation checks for people that are out of town. So, as you can see, the totals for the volunteers are 428 hours, and a great success in that work group as well. So, one thing that we mentioned that we started at our last meeting here back in October was, we recognize that we always are not able to find people in the community that stand out, that volunteer, and so we do ask that all of you, and want to remind you, that we have a program where you can nominate individuals who live and volunteer in Citrus Heights, and the nomination form's on our website, because we want to make sure that we include them in this ceremony every year, and at least invite them and bring them into recognition, too. As I said, we were talking about Meals on Wheels earlier, and that's another great group and organization that we'd love to see here, but we need your help also to identify the people that you know in your neighborhoods, or your schools, or your churches, that are really committed to giving back to the community. So, for the people that volunteer and work for the city, we've started a volunteer program where we have, if you look on the screen, the white pins are for the volunteers that work at the city and the Community Center, and then the darker pin on the right is the one for the police folks that volunteer at the Police Department. And we wanted to highlight three people that are, two are not here tonight, but one of them is Joan Peterson wasn't able to make it, but she received her one-year merit pin. Judy Bartlett, if you want to come up, we have a certificate and your pin for you. So, Judy's receiving her two-year merit pin. She's been with the city for two years, and she works over at City Hall, and she also helps with our Project Lifesaver. So, thank you. And our third one is Zachary Powers. He's one of our volunteer interns. He's actually in, going through some of the Police Academy training, and he received his 1,000-hour merit pin, and he was not able to make it tonight because he's working, so. So, I want to thank everyone for your time, your talents, everything that you provide and give to the community. The spirit of giving and giving back is, does not go unnoticed, and is so appreciated. For me, I've been leading this program for almost 10 years, maybe a little bit longer, and it's actually my honor to work with all of you. I absolutely love to work with you. You inspire me. You're positive, your energy is unbelievable, and I know that we try to make it fun for you, and I hope we do, and we certainly, you certainly make it fun for us at work, so. So, the next thing we're going to do is, we're gonna call the volunteers up in their groups, I will call you out, and if you will just come up on the area right here, and once everybody gets up here, we'll have Councilmember Daniels do the proclamation, and then at the end of that, each of you will receive a Citrus Heights bag that has our new logo on it, and Barbara will be in the back when we're done, and you sit down, and you can pick them up outside. And then, of course, if you have people from your service clubs, and you need to pick up a couple extra from some of the people that weren't able to be here, you're certainly welcome to get those as well, so. Okay. So, let's see here, we have, from the Planning Commission, Portia and Michael. We have Neighborhood Association Two, Forrest. Come on up to the front, please. Come on, Mike. You can do it. So, Neighborhood Association Four, Anna, Ed, Peter, Anita, and Richard. And Neighborhood Association Five, Nancy. Neighborhood Association Six, Karen, Raymond, and Donna. And Neighborhood Association Ten, Lorraine. And Citrus Heights Marching Band, I know that Kathy's here, I don't know if Cody and Bill are here, I'm not sure that I saw you, but Kathy? Okay? And Paul Reyes from the American Legion. Roberta Beach from Friends of the Library. What a great group. Joan Whitaker from the Community Center, Billy, Suzie. Tanya from the Community Center, Elisa, and Bartlett. Judy, I'm sorry, Judy. I said Bartlett. Judy Bartlett, come on down. So, then Animal Services, and these are our folks that help with our cats. We have Barbara and Carol. And then, lastly, welcome Barbara and Carol. We hear great things about you and how wonderful you are helping our animal services. They think you're fantastic. So, and then our Police Department volunteers, we have Tom, Judy, Judy. Charlotte, Diane, Margine. Michael's already up here. Yvonne, Donna. Sherry, Chris. Dominique, Brandon, Artie, Mark, Mike, and Pia. And Brandon, did I say Brandon? And Brandon. So, Councilmember Daniels, if you'd like to come down? So, we're gonna take a group picture. He's going to do the proclamation, and then we'll kind of gather in the back, and we'll take a group picture, too, so.
This is an incredible honor and privilege to do, because Citrus Heights is not Citrus Heights today without volunteers. And we just probably can't even express in words the significant contribution that volunteers do, and so, from my heart, council, the mayor, everybody, city manager, and all the city employees, thank you, thank you, thank you, because you allow us and them to do other things that they would have to otherwise be doing. So, thank you so much. Let me read this, we are recognizing April 15 through April 21, 2018 as National Volunteer Week. Whereas during this week, all over the nation, we recognize the millions of volunteers who strengthen, enrich, and improve our community through their tireless and selfless commitment to serving others. Whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations like hands-on network affiliates and volunteer centers. Whereas individuals and communities are at the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference. Whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed, and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service. Whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient. And whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's social problems, amen to that. Whereas we honor Citrus Heights outstanding volunteers and their invaluable contribution to our community, and whereas volunteers are vital, are vital, to our future as a caring and productive nation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim April 15 through April 21, 2018 as National Volunteer Week, and urge our citizens to volunteer in their respective communities. Thank you all very much.
I do want to mention that I was just informed that we missed the Heart volunteers who came up in the Sunrise Marketplace, my apologies for that. We didn't quite get that coordinated, and I do apologize, but they are a phenomenal part of our community, so if I've missed anybody else in there, we love all of you, I promise. And I absolutely am sincere in telling you how great it is to work with all of you. I know that all of our city staff enjoy it as well, and we are very blessed to have all of you. Thank you.
And you're all encouraged to stick around for a couple of hours for the meeting, so please do.
And don't let Brett slip out.
I have one more announcement, that there are more volunteers from the library here, and I had only received one RSVP, so I think there's five more volunteers from the library, so if you'll stand up, so we can acknowledge you, too. Thank you very much for all of your service.
Whoops. Not used to this yet. Okay, what's next, Amy?
The next item is presentation number five, a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming April 2018 as Fair Housing Month.
Okay, and I think I delegated this to Councilmember Fox.
And we do have a representative with the Sacramento Self-Help Housing that will be accepting the proclamation tonight.
So, Taheri Craft, if you'd meet Mr. Fox at the podium? It's a little longer walk than the old place.
Could you repeat again, sir?
Yes. I saw you back there. Okay, this is a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming May as the Fair Housing Month. Whereas Fair Housing Month is celebrated each April across the United States, and this year we celebrate the 50th anniversary of the enactment of the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968, and whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in the sale, rental, and financing of dwellings, and in other housing-related transactions based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familiar status, or disability. And whereas we recognize Fair Housing Month, it is timely that we reflect on the importance in community, states, and the nation to affirm civil rights and oppose bigotry and discrimination. And whereas in the City of Citrus Heights affirms that every American, in choosing where they want to live, has the right to live in dignity and safety, and without fear of discrimination, and that the city supports state and federal protections against discrimination in the sale and rental of housing. And whereas the City of Citrus Heights supports the education of homeowners, realtors, landlords, property managers, homebuyers, and tenants regarding their rights and responsibilities under federal and state fair housing laws. And whereas the City of Citrus Heights is proud of its commitment to fair housing while recognizing the need to affirmatively further fair housing in its policies and practices, and is committed to continuing to work to identify and remove impediments to fair housing choices. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 as Fair Housing Month, and confirms its commitment to ensure there is equal access to housing for every member of our community, and it is signed on the 26th day of April 2018 by Mayor Steve Miller and our city clerk, Amy Van.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You got a little part there, too?
What?
You need this part?
No.
Okay.
I just want to take a quick, I can speak English, I really can, a quick bit to say thank you so much. You've been supporting fair housing through the Renters Help Line now going on five years, and I can't thank you enough. You have made a big difference to a lot of individuals in Citrus Heights. This year alone, we have already addressed quite a few individuals with discrimination, with the influx of immigration, and also familiar status for individuals with children. So, I really want to appreciate, we've been educating the community, and we hope to continue educating the community, and hopefully eliminate some of these issues that still exist in our society. So, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, Ms. Van?
The next item, number six, is a presentation by Dignity Health, and they will provide an update on the medical office building project.
Monica Alejandra is Human Resources Manager. As you know, several years ago, the City of Citrus Heights embarked on a unique public and private partnership with Dignity Health Foundation, Medical Foundation, and this partnership resulted in the construction of our new city hall and a state-of-the-art medical office building, which is currently under construction. We have invited representatives from Dignity Health here tonight to present the City Council and the Citrus Heights community with a brief update on the construction of the medical office building, and an overview of what is to come once the project is complete. So, at this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Jill Walsh, who's the Citrus Heights Medical Office Building Site Director, to the podium to provide a brief introductions of her colleagues and an update on the project.
Hi, Jill.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm really delighted to be here this evening. I am joined by Kirk Davis, who is my counterpart, and will be also in charge of the new building as my administrative colleague, and then Michael Corpial, who is the president of Mercy San Juan Hospital. So, we are all very excited about our new office building, and I wanted to give you a quick update about where we are and where we're going, and so, we can start with the next slide, please. So, as most of you already know, the exterior of the building is already complete. The concrete floors are in place, so we have the three different floors that are there. The electrical and site utilities are complete. We are starting to, we got the paving done, and we have the curbs all set up for the parking The building is finally watertight, and we have the elevators in place, but otherwise, it's kind of a bit of an empty shell. So, we just finished painting it, and you'll see that coming on to the right-hand extension has been completed, so we don't have too many problems getting into our building and getting down that street. The new sidewalk for, along Greenback is going to be completed very soon, and many will see that we have already started with landscaping, and we have started with planting of those redwood trees along that wall to help protect our city homeowners who are on the other side of that wall, give them a little bit more privacy. Next slide, please. So, obviously, one of the big things about the city hall and its previous location was the wonderful rose garden that was present there and loved by so many of the people who live in the Citrus Heights area. So, we did take one of the roses that was in that original location, and it's thriving and doing well, and we're going to be, we, a few weeks ago, we met with the landscape designers and came up with kind of a new, newer plan right up against the front of our building, where we're going to create a rose garden. And that rose garden will have benches and seating within it, so it's gonna be a place of contemplation, reflection. It'll be prominently displayed right in front of our building, and we'll be able to have our people who are visiting our building, and patients, and our staff be able to go outside and have a moment to smell the roses in the new rose garden. So, both sides of the front entrance are gonna be a little bit different than your typical medical building front entrance, in that we're gonna have rose gardens and a place to meander and pause for a moment, which we all need to do every day. And next slide, please. So, our approach to the Citrus Heights building, I know I've met many of you, and we've talked about kind of this new building that we're doing. For the last year, I have been very actively involved, as has Kurt, working on something called Care of the Future, and our new vision about how we can provide better care to our patients. And it all stems on a vision that we have, which is exceptional healthcare and exceptional experience, and our focus is on the patient and their experience as they interact with us. We want to, we look at the patient experience not just as they come into our building, but also how they interact with us outside of our four walls, and so, that's a critical component to us, is how do we make ourselves a destination where patients can come and say, gosh, I felt cared, well-cared-for and cared about, and that was, I just, I felt so good about the experience that I had by coming to the doctor, which, you know, most people want to avoid at all costs, right? So, we are, in our Citrus Heights, we've designed new workflows, we've designed new spaces, so that we interact with our patients better, we interact as a team better, looking for fostering innovation and patient engagement, trying to increase access by really increasing the number of primary care physicians that are going to be present, so everybody can have a doctor who lives in this area and it's just a few short blocks away, and creating an environment that really reflects what we're about, is that's healing and human kindness and uniting those two. So, we also are leveraging some technology, I mean, we're trying to live in the new world and be able to have different ways that patients can interact with us. Some want to actually come and talk to us, someone actually pick up a phone and talk to a human being, some want to interact with us via the internet and be able to check in online, and, or want somebody to sit down with them and help them through the process. So, we're looking at making sure that all those different possibilities are available with our new building. So, it's a whole, it's the same way, but it's taking it one step better, so. Next slide, please. So, I just want to make sure that you guys knew what kind of services we're gonna be having in this new building. We have all of primary care. On our first floor is our subspecialty floor, and that's going to include our allergy department, our rheumatology department, which takes care of people with arthritis and other kinds of autoimmune-type of diseases, our eye department, ophthalmology department, dermatology department, care of the skin, our pain management department, and our behavioral health or our mental health colleagues. On the second floor, we've integrated our internal medicine doctors with our geriatricians, which is the doctors who take care of our older generation, our endocrinologists who take care of patients who have diabetes and other kinds of medical conditions related to our hormones, and palliative care, which is those physicians who help us when we have a chronic illness such as cancer or chronic kidney disease, and how they can make our life as best as it possibly can be in the last years of our lives. And the third floor is gonna be pediatrics, integrated with family practice. So, we are also gonna have lab, Quest Lab will be on-site, as well as x-rays, so our patients don't have to leave the building to get blood work and x-rays done. We'll have multiple options, as I said, for check-in. We're gonna have greeters at every area who can help our patients wayfind, so it's easy for them to get around. And we have, obviously, reception and waiting room we design, it's kind of redesigned compared to normal. And we're having in-room check-in, and, sorry, in-room check-in. And we're having in-room checkout, so that our patients don't have to go and wait in line to get a next appointment, we'll actually do that for them before we wrap up the visit. So, we are very, really excited, I'm very interested in starting this new way of providing healthcare. I'm obviously a physician myself, and very devoted to what I do to take care of patients, and so, any questions that you guys may have for me this evening?
Any questions?
When? When? That's been the key. We're, the target right now is spring of 2019, so, we're hoping to move it to February, but right now, it's spring of 2019. So, we are going to be starting, we are going to starting, we want to get things moving along, so we'll be starting with the third floor first. Our first floor will be partially done and the third floor, then we'll be moving in the second floor, then we're moving in the first floor, so we can get going and get people in there and start to get patients seen as soon as possible. Any other questions you guys have for me today?
No, thank you for coming.
All right.
You're getting to look really good, yeah.
It is, it is, and it'll be very exciting, and hopefully, our patients and the people here in Citrus Heights will be very excited and happy with the new building and what we can provide there. You guys take care, have a very nice evening.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready to move on. Next item, please.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Okay. Mr. Fox, you want to go first?
No committee meetings since our last meeting. They are working with staff on budgets for both Sacramento Transit Authority and for Cable Commission. Cap-to-cap was, Mayor and I went to cap-to-cap in Washington DC with 350-some-odd other civic leaders and business folks, spent a lot of time on Capitol Hill with different representatives and their senior staff members, talking about different issues. I participated in the Public Safety Committee meetings on, with some of the staff regarding those things near and dear to our heart, and our police agencies and our fire agencies, and came back with some fairly good responses from the folks there on issues that are starting to rise to the surface in the congressional hearings. I was extremely pleased to see, when I got back, that there was a mailer that came out from RT. Everyone up here, sometime or another, have worked with RT on getting more and better service into Citrus Heights, and I was extremely pleased to see that the flyer came out that is using the Smart Ride system now from Antelope through Citrus Heights, Orangevale all the way over to Folsom. This was one of the very first things that I was asked to address when I started on the council, one of my very first meetings with the Sacramento Transit Authority, is to follow up with what others have started, and saying, you know, "We really need this to go through," and it is advancing extremely fast, and I'm pleased to see that. Other than that, I will end it there.
Thank you, Al. Ms. Bruins?
Thank you. I also had no meetings since our last council meeting, so I just wanted to announce what's coming up this weekend. We've got the Citrus Heights Community Marching Band, semi-annual three-day yard sale that starts tomorrow. It's on Linden Avenue, you can't miss it, and it goes through Sunday, and it helps fund all that they do. And so, if you have some time, go out, pay them a visit, and walk away with something you just can't live without. Thank you.
Mr. Daniels?
Airboard met today, main thing out of it was our proposed budget for next year, $53,500,000. So, rest assured, plenty of your tax dollars are being spent to keep your air clean.
Mr. Slowey?
Thank you, sir. So, I've got a new iPad, so I'm a little confused on some things here, so I'm probably going to miss half of this. My calendar isn't how I like it, I haven't got it set up, so, I'm just, not that anybody will complain if I miss half of my events. But the mayor and I did attend the grand opening of Judy's Cleaners, neat little, not little, pretty big 12,000-square-foot dry cleaner over off of Auburn Boulevard. Did attend the local government commission, there were some folks there from Riverside, and they actually did a very good presentation on customer service throughout the city, and some other things that I may be talking to the city manager on down the road, let that percolate a bit. Finance committee met several different times on several different topics that we had earlier in our study session. Two-by-two, we met on affordable housing. Couple other things going on this weekend, and then I'll end. Tomorrow night, there is the Taste of Citrus Heights from 6:00 to 9:30 over at the community center. A bunch of restaurants from town will be presenting their wares, and everybody can vote on them. Next Tuesday, the American Legion is having a fundraiser at Texas Roadhouse, I think it's from 3:00 to 9:00, I could be wrong on that, it's Tuesday sometime. And then, for those of you who don't know, we lost one of our canines a week or so ago, was retired, but he was the only canine that I personally went out on a ride-along with. And let me tell you, riding along with a canine on a rainy night, not a good idea. But I remember him fondly for barking in my ear for four and a half hours. So, I'm going to do my best to attend Bruno's ceremony next Wednesday. With that, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thanks, Jeff. You have some interesting ride-alongs. I, along with Al, as he mentioned, went to the cap-to-cap this year, and I was partially funded by regional transit, so of course, I was on the transportation track, not the law and order like Al was. And I saw a lot of Congresswoman Doris Matsui, and she is one of the greatest advocates for our region, and especially with transit. We did another business visit last Thursday, we went to the West Campus of the National Career Education, and that was along with our city manager, Chris Boyd, chief of police, Ron Lawrence, and Rhonda Sherman, and your new title is head of everything, no, general services?
Community Services Director.
Community Services Director, I apologize for not knowing that off the top of my head. I attended Thursday night the Spirit of San Juan Award Ceremony, given out to outstanding students and teachers in the district, and that was a great event. Also, Jeff mentioned this, the grand opening of Judy's Cleaners, they're back behind the 7-Eleven at Greenback and Auburn, and I think they'll even come out and pick up your cleaning and return it to you, they run a route, so, I'm going to check that out. And then Monday, we had an RT meeting, but it was a special meeting, it was a strategic planning meeting held over at McGeorge School of Law, and we heard from our consultant, who will be redesigning the entire system, we're calling it SAC RT Forward, and it's just looking at all our assets and how we can redeploy them, because some of the routes, and they were well-intended at the time, for example, over at the Arden Light Rail Station, three routes came in, and the intention was that they were timed, and the buses would show up, and the train would show up, and everybody transferred, and off they'd go. That doesn't happen anymore with the traffic, the timing's just all off, and it's just not convenient. So, we're looking at better ways to provide transit in the entire region. One of my biggest takeaways was, you can provide transit that is targeted for riders, and you'll get all the riders, you'll have full buses everywhere, every way, but you'll exclude over 75% of the population. So, that style is called coverage, and I think that's the big decision we're going to have to make, is blending, what do we do for ridership, but also coverage, and that Smart Ride that Al mentioned is a coverage model. It covers areas that can't be covered by traditional transit and big buses. So, it's been a big success, and we're going to have to balance that in with how we deploy the big buses. Brett?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I forgot to mention, I did want to bring this up too, that I attended the San Juan High School Athlete Hall of Fame Dinner, the first annual, and with the chief and a couple of other folks from the department, from the police department. And I got to tell you guys, if you don't know, Citrus Heights has produced some incredible world-class professional-type athletes, and it was over the top. And so, it's the first year, and so, when you hear about this next year, please come out and attend it, because it was an incredible event, tons of work put on by Coach Ruiz, I hope I'm saying his name correctly, and obviously, some support staff, but just putting his whole heart into something, and seeing, and hearing the stories, and having some of the guys come up on the coaching level from when I was there 40 years ago, and hearing their stories and the impact that they had on the lives of kids was just over the top. So, when it comes again next year, treat yourself out and attend that event, and you won't regret it.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, I'm sorry I had to miss it. Okay, and that concluded my remarks as well, so, on to the next item, please.
The next item is public comment, and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments, and any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Okay, and the first speaker I have is Sue Stack.
My name is Sue Stack, I live on Antelope Road, and I'm here to share with you some recent experiences with Paradise Oaks Groups Home. First, I thought I'd give you, if the council members, but I'm sure most of you council members are aware of the background of Paradise Oaks, but for the community's sake, back in 1990, Frank Shellhouse, who was the supervisor of San Juan School District, set up these group homes for the kids between the ages of eight and 12. They were, they had classrooms within the homes, the staff was well-trained, they didn't turn over, and they were really well-run. January, this is the best, to my research, January of 2016, they changed Frank's Shellhouse sold or is no longer part of Paradise Oaks, and it changed to the 12- to 18-year-olds that are severely emotionally disturbed teenage boys. And I just, I'm here just to let the community and the council know that between September of 2016 and the end of March, the police had been called out to the group home next to me 58 times. In those 58 times, there has been more than one officer, there are generally two to three squad cars that show up. I have personally had to call the police department 15 times, where the group kids have interacted with me negatively. So, I wanted to let the council and the community know that it's just, that's just my one group home alone. There are two others, there's one on Mariposa and one on Madison, and this is a drain on our police force services. I would rather our police be out looking for the real criminals, and that's what they share with me, most of the time they come out, when they have to address the kids, is they don't want to come out. They would rather be looking for the real bad guys and not dealing with these young kids. So, anyway, I was just informed prior to the meeting that the police department is working closely now with the management to make some changes, which is wonderful, I am so happy, and that they have pursued action against the kid that fractured my hand. So, anyway, I just want the community and the council to know that back in 1990, when these group homes started, it was altogether a different picture, and they've changed, and Citrus Heights has changed. Antelope Road was a two-lane, you know, we were a two-lane road, we were just a small community, now we're a city, and I would really like for the city council and the police department to work together to find out a good solution for these group homes, because I don't believe they should be in our community. I would really like for the group homes to be out in an area where these boys have room to work out their frustration, an area where there is an exterior building for these kids to learn a trade, such as working on bicycles, or working on cars, or building something, something positive, because right now, according to one of the police officers, 98% of these kids in the group home end up in prison. So, it's not a system that's working, and I'd really like to see a system that would work, and I would like to free up our police department, because I think they're a great police department, and I appreciate the work that they've done with me, and I would just, you know, like to bring that to the council and community's attention, okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for coming back and letting us know and keeping us updated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Daniels?
Yeah, Sue, thanks for coming back, I know it takes courage to come here, and so, thank you for doing that. I'm shocked by those numbers that you just said, because I don't think we would tolerate the police department going to somebody's residence during that timeframe, 58 times, and not try to do something different about it. I know that one thing that we get kind of handcuffed on is, if there's a certain number of kids, I believe, in a group home, it's just a home, it's just somebody's, like, it's just somebody's house, and I think it's eight, but I'm not sure, it's six, the city manager, city attorney is correcting me on the spot, six. And so, I'm going to guess they're operating that way, they may not, but if they're operating in a way that can't be regulated, anything other than a regular home, it may be that we need to start looking at some sort of nuisance lawsuit-type thing, assistance in moving them out. My heart goes out to these kids, I can't imagine the life that they're having to live, but the bottom line is, that ends once they then intrude upon somebody else, and I think it's our obligation to protect taxpayers and citizens of Citrus Heights, and I would like to see if we can get some information back from the police department. I don't not believe you, I believe you, but I would like to get some factual stuff back about how much we've responded out, what kind of calls we've responded to, and again, what kind of guideline maybe these group homes are falling under, whether or not they're just considered residential homes that are offering a program, or whether there's some other level of oversight or regulation they have to be following, because I don't want to tolerate it, and I know that the council members don't want to tolerate anybody having, pulling that kind of services from the police department during that short period of time. We can't operate that way, so I'm hoping we can get some information back, and if we need to go in another direction, there are ways to go towards this, where you file nuisance lawsuits, and they're out, they're just out, and so, don't know if it'll happen, but maybe it's something we need to look at.
Let's talk about this just a bit more, as far as future agenda items, or whatever we want to do. Thank you for coming forward. And with that, that's the only speaker sheet I have, so we're ready to move on to the next item.
So, the next item is consent calendar, items seven, eight, and nine.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? The consent calendar passes?
So, the next item that we will take out of order is item number 13, Department Report. The subject is Sunrise Marketplace LED Median Lighting Memorandum of Understanding Update by the General Services Department.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Miller, members of the city council, Mary Poole with the General Services Department, and Leslie Blomquist, also with the General Services Department, and we're here tonight to give you a brief update on what's happening with the Sunrise Marketplace MOU for the LED median lighting project, and I believe Councilmember Bruins talked about this at the last council meeting, and so, maybe have whetted your appetite for what's coming, but we just wanted to tell you how it's moving along. it's moving along. So we'll just briefly go over the project goals, do an overview, show you where the location is, talk about a few key features of the project, as well as that memorandum of understanding, or the MOU timeline, and then we have a couple minutes for questions, if there are any. So the project goals of the project is to enhance the Sunrise Marketplace placemaking and branding, support the, the bid's marketing goals, promote economic vitality in the district and the city, obviously to maintain pedestrian and vehicular safety, that's a top priority, and also to reduce energy use. And the overview, I'll have Leslie explain.
Yes, this project will install LED lighting with the capability to shine both white and colored lights on seventy-one palm trees located in four medians along Sunrise Boulevard. The colors will be selected for both reoccurring themes, such as holidays or annual events, and also one-time event-based themes. Here's a overview map of the proposed locations. There are five medians along Sunrise between Madison and north of Arcadia. One of them, the one just south of Greenback Lane, does not have power, so that is not included in this project, but the other four medians, one, two, three, and five, as listed on the map, are included in the project. The energy use of the new lights are about half of what we have out there currently. They will be thematically programmed to mark holidays and other special events. There'll be two lights per palm, and the infrastructure will be installed in the existing underground conduit. We don't anticipate any new trenching will be required for this.
So that was an overview of the project, and then the memorandum of understanding. This is a project between the city and the marketplace, and so that there are responsibilities for each entity. For the marketplace, they will be responsible to do all of the design work and construction of the project, all associated permits, plan reviews will be the responsibility for them to submit. They will also develop and submit an annual lighting-themed timing and operations plan that will be approved, reviewed, and approved by the city, and all ongoing maintenance will be the responsibility of the marketplace. The city will have the responsibilities to make sure that, should there be some type of emergency or something that happens that needs immediate response, the city will respond to that and make sure that the right-of-way is cleared, and then notify the marketplace to follow up and do required maintenance or repairs. The city is also providing staff support, so staff will be providing design and construction review of all of the planning documents and specs. And then also for the construction and the inspection services for the encroachment, city staff will provide that, and there won't be a cost to the marketplace for those services. The city is already paying electricity costs out there, and the city will continue to do so, although there will be some cost savings with the new efficiencies that have been, that will be incorporated with the LED lighting. The tentative timeline, right now, we're in the midst of finalizing the MOU, and then the next step is for the marketplace to develop and issue their request for proposals for design, and then that consultant will be working to develop the specifications. The materials will need to be ordered in June. Plans and specs, final plans and specifications will be submitted to the city by August. Any kind of permitting and staff review will take place in between August and September. Then the installation will happen, and the anticipated launch is in October. So it's, it's moving right along.
We've just included some photos of a similar application down in Los Angeles County in the city of San Pedro, just to provide an idea of what we're anticipating on Sunrise Boulevard. So we have two photos, this one, and this one was actually taken last week, so.
So this picture actually shows it in operation, or one of our staff was visiting San Pedro and took a picture for us, and so we were able to show you it in almost real time.
And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
I'll just move it on that.
So this project actually, you said it would result in less energy used over what we're using now?
Correct.
Does something like this, would it qualify for savings by design with SMT, or is this out of their little grant box?
I believe that the marketplace did apply for a grant, but was not awarded funds through the, through a program, the Shine program.
Yeah, I think it was something different.
I'm not sure if there are other pots of funds that this would be eligible for, we can talk to SMT.
Be worth a phone call.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Perty. Thank you. Will you like it? Jeffy likes it.
Thank you.
Now back to the, where we were.
So the next item, public hearing, number ten. The subject is amended citizen participation plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the amended citizen participation plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Nicole Piva with the Community and Economic Development Department. I'm going to review the citizen participation plan and the change that we've added to this plan with you tonight. So the city receives federal funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and with those funds, we have to adopt a citizen participation plan. That plan's already been adopted. It outlines how the city involves participation when we implement or develop a CDBG program. So the change that we've made to the citizen participation plan is we've added assessment of fair housing. This is an actual document. In two thousand sixteen, HUD released a memo requiring jurisdictions that receive federal funds to add the language to assessment of fair housing and the public participation in the plan. So we have done that, and basically, the fair housing document identifies barriers within our community to economic opportunities, such as, you know, the barriers to residents that have barriers to schools, or shopping centers, or housing. So we are currently working with other jurisdictions. We're in a fair housing, a regional fair housing right now with other jurisdictions to produce a regional document, so this document will be coming soon. Also, the plan hasn't been updated since two thousand eleven, so we just took this time to make some changes to it, make it a little more user-friendly. So we didn't make any changes to the public comment periods, or where hearings are held, or the time that public notices are released, so all that stayed the same. So the only change we made was the addition to the fair housing document. So with that, we'd like to recommend holding a public hearing to amend the citizen participation plan and to adopt it by resolution.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing and ask that anyone wishing to speak on this come forward. And seeing nobody bolting from their chairs, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask council for their direction.
Move approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Nicole.
Yeah, thank you.
So the next item is another public hearing, number eleven. The subject is approving the twenty eighteen Community Development Block Grant Action Plan Amendment authorizing the city manager to execute all contracts, and the recommendation is to approve a resolution approving the twenty eighteen Community Development Block Grant Action Plan Amendment.
Good evening, council. Stephanie Cotter, Community and Economic Development Department. So each year, as part of the CDBG process, the city council adopts an action plan, which outlines how we're going to spend our CDBG funding for the year. We get approximately five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, and the city council adopted our twenty eighteen action plan in, on November ninth, twenty seventeen. Excuse me. So the proposed amendment to the twenty eighteen action plan, you know, we can make some minor adjustments, but anytime we make a significant adjustment, such as adding a new activity, we bring this to, to you for your consideration in order to amend the plan. So since, in twenty eighteen, the city awarded eight thousand dollars in CDBG funds to a community for peace to provide support services to children and their families who have been exposed to domestic violence, and subsequent to the adoption of the action plan, that activity was actually canceled. So following the cancellation of that activity, we received a proposal from WEAVE to provide a new public service activity for support services to victims of domestic violence, in addition to victims of sexual assault and sex trafficking. So as such, we recommend reallocating the eight thousand dollars from the canceled activity for a community for peace, and that's on the left column of the chart, to reallocate it to WEAVE to provide a new public service activity, and the actual numbers of the service goals and everything is on the right column. So no one's expenses have been incurred for the canceled activity, and we're simply transferring the funds to a different activity, which means that doesn't result in a net impact to your CDBG funding or the general fund. And if you, if you were to adopt this amendment, this is how the amended action plan for twenty eighteen would look for the CDBG program. It's split into the three categories, public services, capital projects, and planning and administration. So we would be canceling one activity, public act, public services activity, and adding an additional public service activity. Do you have any questions for me at this point?
Just one, so CDBG, remind me, is that on the calendar year or the fiscal year?
The calendar.
Calendar year, the community support is on the fiscal year.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Move approval. Oh, it was never.
Oh, sorry. Also, I just wanted to note that Julie Bornhoff from WEAVE is here tonight, so if you do have any questions, she can answer them, you know, now or later, and then we'll do the public hearing and then the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. And again, this is required to be a public hearing, so I will open it, and seeing no one wishing to speak, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Abstentions? I think it's a landslide.
Motion carried.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next item, regular calendar, number twelve. The subject is resolution adopting master license agreement template and process for right-of-way installs of wireless facilities. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the master license agreement and authorizing the city manager to execute the wireless master license agreements and issue pole license for city-owned poles in the right-of-way.
Good evening, council. Allison Bermudez here with the Planning Division. It's been a long time to get here. We've been working on this project for a couple years, had a lot of stops and starts along the way with legislation and activities. It's been really a partnership with the city attorney's office and our General Services Division to get to this point, so very happy to have this before you. So this master license agreement is a template, essentially, that would be adopted. So when cellular carriers come into the city and want to install their infrastructure on our light poles, we have something in place to provide them to say, if you want to use our facilities, this is how you're going to proceed, this is what you're going to do, this is how it's going to attach, and it really lays out the process. And what this does, it really streamlines this application review, so each carrier does not have to come before you to have their agreement approved, as long as they agree to these terms that we have laid out. It would be held at staff level. So it really advantage is reduces staff time, reduces presentations before you, and it really gets to a rapid deployment of these facilities as we receive more applications. So to remind you, what they're asking for are these small cells, is what the carriers are installing along infrastructure, along corridors and right, and along the right-of-way. They're installed on infrastructures, mostly light poles is what we're referring to in this particular agreement, and it really brings the antenna closer to the ground. There's more of them protruding or giving coverage in a smaller area, unlike the macro towers that we're used to seeing that cover, you know, a mile to two mile. These cover, you know, with a thousand, two thousand feet. So they're lower to the ground, a smaller range, and these are really the future. It's what 5G deployment is going to require in order to get this rollout community-wide. Provides more access for the community for wireless, as wireless integrates into our life more than cell phones. There's a lot of data, a lot of products are generated and operated from wireless, so it really is serving the community. These are very low-power, low-emission-type facilities. I'd say they're very, they're very low, giving facilities closer to the ground where your people are going to gather, and not these large towers. And in essence, over time, these large towers hopefully will be reduced, and we would have fewer of them installed. And these will be along in our city commercial corridors. As it's laid out now, these are not allowed in residential neighborhoods, so residents shouldn't have to fear that if there's a light pole in front of their house, they're going to, at this point in time, will not, they will not receive an antenna attachment. These will be along our major corridors, Sunrise, Greenback, Antelope-type facilities. Here's a picture of one that's recently installed by Sac State to give you the large picture. There's an antenna at the top underneath that shroud, so it sticks up above the light post, two, two feet or so, and there is antennas under that covering. And there is a couple attachments about midway on the pole, and so this is really the generation and the feature of how these are attaching and appearing now, unlike the pictures on the right that are very, what we seem to think of, because that's how originally they started appearing and being attached. That's not what we're doing in this program. They will be very similar to the large picture. How this works is the carrier would enter into this master agreement, would be their initial step. As I said, it will lay out the terms and the conditions. Once they agree to this master agreement, then they would submit what we call a pole license for each location that they choose to use, and so that's an individual process per location. They do go through a design review process. If you remember, recall, last year or so, we adopted guidelines for that. That limits how they can appear, how their size, and so forth, so that is part of the process. And then once all those steps are done, then they can proceed with installation. So this master agreement is really the first step of this process, and we're looking, we've been working on this, as I mentioned, for quite a while. We had a lot of communications and input from AT&amp;T and Mobility, who was representing Sprint, so we have received their input, incorporated their comments into the document. Let's see, I did put at your chair a recent email that I received yesterday from AT&amp;T. They still had two outstanding comments regarding the program. One was really just a cleanup item. They talked, because we do require, we did require initially that they install new conduit and pole boxes for future city use when they install these. We have since amended the agreement to say we would review that on a case-by-case basis, so it's not a flat requirement. So that is in the master license agreement in section seven, and AT&amp;T brought up the point that Exhibit A five did not carry over that new agreement. So A five, I put on your chair and amended, and really should have struck out the whole entire last paragraph on there that doesn't, that removes the requirement that those pole boxes and conduit be installed. We'll review those on a case-by-case basis. In addition, they did bring up the fee, and so I want to talk about the light, the fee a little bit. As this progress, as this document goes, the master license agreement, they do pay a deposit, and we deduct from their deposit for staff time to review it and approve it, so that document's paid for through a deposit. The fee, they pay a deposit, as we review that application as well. The only, or they pay the deposit, the fee that they pay on a yearly basis for the term of the agreement, which is ten years, is a set fee that we have initiated at two thousand dollars a year. So that would be two thousand dollars a year collected for each pole that they utilize. That's annually collected. And so AT&amp;T mentioned in their email that they felt that was, that fee was too high, so I just want to talk a little bit about where that number came from. Glad to say that we are really the first jurisdiction to have this, or be at this point in the master license agreement. There's no other jurisdiction nearby us that is, that has done this. Most stopped with the legislation that was proposed last year, where the state was going to tell us what we had to do, how much we could. to tell us what we had to do, how much we could collect. We chose to kind of proceed on, moving forward, so we continued developing this master license agreement. And then fortunately, as you recall, that Senate bill was not signed by the governor. So we are still further ahead than most local jurisdictions because we continued forward. So we didn't really have anyone nearby to compare this fee to of what we were going to charge per year on these poles, but we did do a comprehensive review of what's collected statewide. And as in the chart that I provided to you, it really does vary. You can go as high as $4,000 a year to some that are $100 a year. It just depends on what the community has, what they're looking to do. There's a lot of variables in the decision on why these different fees are in place. So we really just kind of looked at, what's the average fee? We went in the middle or a little bit higher than the middle, but it really was just a starting point and something that was put in the document, and it really is your decision tonight to decide that fee, if you would like to lower it, if you'd like to raise it. However you choose, it is your discretion. Just wanted to remind you, there is time. There's leasing space on our infrastructure, and it will take some time. If something happens to that structure, where we would have to contact the carrier, work with them on getting the equipment replaced, so there is some cost to us, you know, through time, but it's up to you to decide what that figure is. So I just wanted to tell you that $2,000 is in there. It was just a number based upon the surveys that we had. And that's all I have for you on my part, but I'm happy to answer questions on the project and then the recommendation.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Slowik.
So do we have any idea the number of poles we're talking about? I mean, obviously with 5G and knowing that it can't go residential, I mean, we're probably looking at Sunrise, Greenback, Sullivan, our side of Madison, not Hazel, but what's Fair Oaks. So, I mean, we have some major corridors. Now, I also know when they tried to force it on us through the state, their fee was $400.
$250.
$250.
Okay, yeah. So, you know, I don't like paying $1,000 for my new phone, but I suck it up and do it. So I'm not so much concerned to hear them say, you know, after hearing your explanation of how you came up with it. But I do think whatever we do with that fee, I think, once we impose, it's imposed, I'd like to be able to hear back, because zero times 2,000 is still zero. You know, if we have this out there and they're not coming, but they're going everywhere else, or we hear other places are doing it, but at considerably lower, I'd like to be appraised of that. But, I mean, these are profitable multimillion, in some cases billion-dollar companies. So, you know, I get that they don't want to pay it. I'm not, you know, when I first read it, I'm like, well, I get, you know, that makes sense, but these also, even though they're new and improved-looking, they're still kind of ugly, and they're going to be on taxpayer polls. And they're, you know, once they put them out there, they're going to want to do more. So I think whatever we do, I just want to make sure that we get a report back in a reasonable amount of time, what's going on, are they using them or not? And if we hear of other jurisdictions that have a different fee and they're getting them installed, then I'd want to look at it. But I'm okay with the proposal for now, with the understanding that, you know, we'd want to look at it down the road.
Sure. Makes sense.
I have similar feelings that Jeff expressed, and one of mine is, and I did talk with a rep from AT&amp;T, and I didn't view it as a threat, but it was more of a, if you're looking at a city, say Roseville, at 1,800 pole, and Citrus Heights at 2,000, where are you going to deploy your technology? And so that's a concern to me, that, and it looked like we picked the top end as opposed to some of the other, what the other cities are charging. We don't know, Elk Grove hasn't done, established.
Elk Grove has not established it. Rancho is very close behind us, and their fee, from my understanding from speaking to their staff working on it, is less than the 2,000.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I understood, too. And so likelihood that Roseville and Ranch Cudova would be deployed, you know, we'd probably be last in line, if at all. Jeff put it well. You know, if you can only sell zero poles at 2,000, you're not, we're not generating any revenue. And the other big player is the unincorporated Sacramento County. Do you know if they're working on anything?
I don't know their progress. They really haven't done a master license agreement to this level at this point. I think they're handling more on an individual basis.
I appreciate, you know, how you came up with the number, and that's important, but I don't think we've seen what the true market price is. It's all over the place. San Francisco's 4,000, but that's San Francisco. And some of the other ones are, you know, a little more well-to-do communities, and they may not care whether they get this technology or not.
Right, and it was really hard to compare, because everyone has a different.
Structure.
Different structure. I had a lengthy conversation today with West Sacramento, who is considerably lower. They're in the 250 range, but their situation is, you know, they're on the other side of the river. They don't have the fiber, they don't have the infrastructure, so that was their way to encourage people to come there, because they realize how costly it is to run all this stuff. So just different methods, different methodologies and thoughts about how you're going to get there. So.
I like the fact that out of the chute, you have our costs covered for planning and building department. That's taken out of deposit, then I take the balance or we return.
We returned or request more money if.
Yeah, if it starts to go over. Hopefully, and knowing you guys, you'll get it in and out, and we'll have to look at each situation to where maybe when we're opening up the asphalt or the concrete.
I would imagine after a couple, it would, that number would go down, the time would go down. It's just very new. It's something we're not used to doing, and as I say, it's new everywhere, so I assume that will go down each time.
So we got that covered, and the rest is just pure income, truly, if it gets deployed in our city. Some of the things I saw that the other jurisdictions did that I thought was creative was, one, they had a tiered approach by time, so it started out less, and as time went on, in four years, they raised it. And another one would be to maybe incentivize an area, say Auburn Boulevard, and say, okay, in this district, maybe $1,000 a pole and, you know, 2,000 elsewhere in the busy corridors or the marketplace, something like that. And so looking at some creative ways to target this technology to areas that really need it.
One thing I did want to mention is, this is really a template for a master agreement. So if a carrier comes in with a unique deployment or something different, they can do that, but it won't be this quicker process.
Right, unless.
With staff. It would come back to you.
Unless we had this tiered approach or time approach in our master agreement.
And this agreement, too, just while you mentioned Auburn Boulevard, is only for your typical A, I think was what they're called, streetlights, your typical standard streetlights for attachments. So Auburn Boulevard decorative lights or Fountain Square decorative lights are not included in this. So if they propose attachments to those, that will have to be looked at separately.
Yeah, and I'd like to see it all included. I don't know if we need, my feeling is, I don't know that we need to rush into this, that we might want to spend a little more time just on the fee schedule. And thank you for getting the master agreement together. It's quite lengthy, but it looks like it covers a lot of the concerns we had about indemnification that we had in the past, so thank you for that part.
Yeah. I mean, at the end of the day, it's nice to be able to see Roseville, Folsom, Citrus Heights, Rancho, Elk Grove, et cetera, all on the same page from a fee standpoint, because again, if we're the highest, going to be the last. So I'm somewhat in agree, I honestly don't know what that figure is, but I like the incentivization, and if Rancho's that close and we're very similar, you know, I mean, I could move forward with this with the understanding that we're not finished with the fee, because I'm not really sure that what that number is.
Well, this is an amendable. Correct. So you could adopt it as-is or amend the fee now, and then if we found that wasn't working, not high enough, too low, too high, whatever it might be, we could come back and amend the master agreement.
Well, you know, I'm fine with going forward with what you've come up with. I think you've done a boatload of research on this, and quite frankly, I'm glad to see that we're ahead of the curve, because we, you know, we dodged a bullet, you know, with the governor vetoing the bill. That would have made it very different for us and no income at all. So I'm in favor of moving forward with it, and then if we have to adjust in the future, we adjust.
We got $167 a month per pole. I'm not getting any real heartburn with jumping into a lower fee at this point till we actually see how things are going. And I think staff has done a commendable job in getting us to this point, so at least we have a starting point. And if we do have to change it, then we can always come back. But I think this is a good starting point.
Mr. Daniels, any comments? What's the pleasure?
Well, I move approval of the project and move that we adopt the resolution to approve the wireless master license agreement and to authorize the city manager to execute a wireless master license agreement and to issue pole licenses for city-owned poles in the right-of-way.
Second. Okay, is the motion second, comment?
Well, I was just going to see if I could make an addition to that, that within six months, they come back and tell us what other jurisdictions are doing and where we stand on our own. Is that fair?
Sure.
So that's accepted by both?
Accepted.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the motion carries, four to one.
Was there a no vote, or?
There was a no vote.
Which?
That would be Steve.
That's me. I didn't quite know how to do that.
All those opposed, and then you say no.
Didn't I?
We'll work on that. We'll give you some lessons.
Okay, don't get to do that too often.
So the motion carried on four to one vote.
Yeah.
Next item is Department Reports, number 14. The subject is update on code enforcement unit by the Citrus Heights Police Department.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Ronald Lawrence, your police chief, and I continue to marvel at the great work that gets done in the police department. I've been your police chief for a while now, and the men and women of your police department do such, such great work. There's so many things that happen. And last month, I provided you an annual report of the police department for last calendar year. It gave you a very high-level view at some of our accomplishments, some of our goals, and some of the great work, but there's no way that that report can cover everything that we do. And really, there's no way to connect the faces of the men and women who are doing that work. So I look for opportunities to highlight some of our units, particularly those unsung heroes that are working behind the scenes. And tonight, we have the opportunity to present to you the code enforcement unit, which is led by Commander Anderson, and I'm going to turn this over to her. But before I do, I want to thank Commander Anderson and Lieutenant Gutierrez and Sergeant Morris. They're the leaders that really make sure we stay within budget, we stay effective, and we stay on the cutting edge of making sure we get things done. So, Commander?
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm Gina Anderson. I'm the commander of your investigative services division of your police department, and I'm here to provide you the code enforcement update for 2017 and to highlight some of their accomplishments. And the chief is true to say that these really are the unsung heroes of our department, and I think by the end of this report this evening, you will recognize clearly why. You'll see that our code enforcement unit accomplishes just a tremendous amount of work, and they do it oftentimes in just, not just unsightly, but also unsanitary conditions in order to protect our community from public nuisances. So our code enforcement unit is comprised of three code enforcement officers, and they're each responsible for a different geographical area of the city. I'm incredibly proud of this unit, and I'd like to introduce them here for you tonight. We have Code Enforcement Officer Deborah Nathan. She's our most tenured code officer, and she's been with our police department. She started with us in 2013 as a volunteer. She was hired as a code enforcement officer in 2014, and in addition to her code enforcement skills, Deborah also is an expert in crime analysis and has volunteered in our crime analysis unit as the analyst to support that unit when the position has been vacant. We also have Code Enforcement Officer Ken Aiello, and Ken has been with us since August of 2015. Prior to working with the city of Citrus Heights, Ken worked for many years as a code enforcement officer with the city of Fairfield. We're very proud of Ken. We value his experience, and we value it so much that we have made him our field training officer, so to speak, for our new code enforcement officer. So I'm happy to present you tonight with our newest code enforcement officer, Frederick Giroux, and he's been working with us since August of last year. Our newest code enforcement officer, great addition to our team. Just a little unknown fact about Fred, when he first started at the police department, we found out that prior to being hired, he read the entire building code, just to make sure that his house, when he was doing repairs on it, was up to code. Now, when I heard that he was that motivated, I knew that he was just going to be a great addition to this team, and he has certainly proved to be just that. So of the many responsibilities our code enforcement unit has, these are pretty much the bulk of them. And so they are responsible for responding to reports of city code violations and ensuring that those violations are abated on problem properties. The code officers work with our building department to determine when both rental and owner-occupied housing are uninhabitable, and then they are responsible for posting those locations, which for us makes it a misdemeanor in order to occupy those dwellings if they're uninhabitable, and allows our police officers to make arrests of trespassers and squatters so that they can make sure to prevent further damage to the property and then also prevent the squatters from potentially being, coming injured in hazardous conditions. They work closely with our special investigations unit to conduct investigations into our massage parlors and to ensure that there's not illicit activity occurring in those locations, and also to enforce specific codes related to massage establishments. They're responsible for working with our POP and our patrol officers and other city staff in identifying and cleaning up both public property and private property camps. They also work with our special investigations unit to ensure that our marijuana cultivation ordinances are complied with. They respond to reports of graffiti to ensure removal. They also abate abandoned and inoperable vehicles from private property. And finally, they work in conjunction with the planning department on business license revocation, and they conduct follow-ups to ensure that unlicensed businesses are not operating in our city. That is just the bulk of what they do. So impressively, last year, they responded to 1,221 calls for service. So that sounds like a large number, and it really is. It's really an incredible number considering that with some retirements that we had and some personnel movements, for most of last year, they were working with two code enforcement officers. And so now, between the three of them, they have 197 open cases, and so those are pretty much the ongoing cases. A lot of these code enforcement cases are not just resolved overnight, and I've got some examples that I'm going to show you here in just a moment. But sometimes they take months or even years to resolve. So this is one example of just one property that they worked on last year, and you can see on the right-hand side both before and after pictures. In order to truly appreciate what our officers do, you've got, you'll have to see these next few slides that I'm going to show you here. But this property in particular came to our attention because of numerous police calls for service, and these calls range from family disturbances and fights to assault with a deadly weapon. In addition, this rental property was being used as a butane oil honey lab. Our code enforcement worked with the property owner to have the tenants evicted, then the property became a squatter, a location for squatters. Ultimately, our code enforcement posted the property as uninhabitable and worked with the property owner to bring the property into compliance so it could be sold. This project took seven months to complete. This is another problem property that the code enforcement unit worked on last year. This was an owner-occupied property in which the owner passed away. The house subsequently turned into a location for squatters. It created numerous police-related calls for service. The property was then posted as uninhabitable because of a lack of utilities, and the property eventually went into foreclosure and was sold. The enforcement unit worked with the new property owners to bring the property. The enforcement unit worked with the new property owners to bring the property in, into compliance. As you can see, it looks great in the after photos. And this project took them six months to complete. Now, this property is a current property, problem property that they are continuing to work on. It's located along Sunrise Boulevard and was brought to our attention by a neighborhood complaint. This particular property, we've had cases open on in 2010, 2012, 2013, and 2014, all of which ended with the voluntary compliance of the property owner. This most recent case was opened in March of 2017. And although the process is slow, the property owners are taking responsibility and have agreed to work with the city in order to, to come to compliance. So we should be seeing positive results on this property in the near future. This is another property that our code enforcement team is currently working on within our city. It was brought to the attention of our unit by a neighbor who, who made a complaint, and then we subsequently followed up on that complaint with a probation search. This has been an ongoing project because the resident is an, the resident is, is owner, residence is owner-occupied, and the owner is recently deceased. And so there's a reverse mortgage on this property, and code enforcement is working with the mortgage holder on, on evictions and then will subsequently clean up the property. But they are currently actively working this case. And then finally, this is one very recent case that came to our attention. And this came to our attention through our, through a report to our animal control unit regarding an animal welfare check. And when the officers arrived at that location, they found that there were 22 pit bulls living in the house. So this occupant was unable to care for himself, and the residence has since been posted as uninhabitable because of the animal urine and feces throughout the residence. So our code enforcement team is now working on coming up with a plan to clean up this property. And I, I've posted this property, just to give you an idea of what kinds of properties our code enforcement officers are working in, this is one example of many that they've had to investigate over last year and the years prior. And so it's a pleasure, I can say, to actually be able to look at this property and see the pictures and not actually have to endure the smell that they had to endure when they were conducting this original investigation. So finally, I just really would like to thank our code enforcement officers, Aiello, Giroux, and Nathan, for all the work that they've done this past year. They are just, they've accomplished just an incredible volume of work, and oftentimes in some shocking circumstances. Their leadership, I'm also very proud of, and Lieutenant Gutierrez and Sergeant Morris. And not only do they do great work, but they are just a fantastic pleasure to work with every day. So thank you very much. And I'll entertain any questions or comments if you'd like.
First off, thank you very much. You guys go into some nasty situations. So I'm glad it's you and not me. Thank you. Any other questions and comments for?
I would just echo those comments. I mean, based on those pictures, obviously, you're not going to the highfalutin part of town. You're kind of going to some of our less desirable properties. Thank you for what you do, because it is a quality of life issue for anybody who lives around there. So I would just say to the public, you know, obviously, we're not seeing inside all the houses, but report the problems. We have good people to look at them. If it's not an issue, we're not going to, you know, come down on anybody. But those pictures, again, thanks for all that you do, and sorry you have to go into some of those dumps. It's kind of disgusting.
You didn't wear those uniforms to work today, did you? Thank you for what you do. It's, it's all about the smell. Yep.
Well, we're looking to drum some more work up for you with the inspection program, so stay tuned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commander. Okay, what do we have next?
Next item is city manager items, and there are none. Next is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Anything?
Just a follow-up from earlier regarding the, the group home thing. I, the thing that struck me, too, was that the comment that there were 58 calls there, and I think she said she was only responsible for 15. So that is an indication to me that we have an issue, we have a problem. And I think we also have an obligation to see everything, what we can do about it to the greatest extent. So maybe starting with just some information.
Yeah, a little bit of information.
Just some information right now about what's going on there, and then maybe something later.
Yeah, I'd support follow-up, you know, whether it's via email or whatever. We don't need to do a presentation on it, but just to kind of get us up to speed. Because I would echo that if there's any property that's requiring that many calls for service, you know, we should probably have some type of plan, so.
And whether or not it's just a single-family home or it's actually something that's regulated, who would regulate it?
But, but we know you guys are working on it, so appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, I think the other part here we haven't heard is, I think they're working on it. So we'll, we'll, we'll get you some information.
The other side of the story, that's what we want.
Okay, anything else?
Just very quickly, Monica has three young ladies here from one of the local high schools doing their government, I guess it's your government studies class. So I hope you've gotten enough notes and things to do what you need to do. And thank you for being with us.
Yeah, let us know if you want those pictures forwarded, because.
Oh, yeah. Oh, and if there's nothing else?
Nothing else.
Then we're adjourned.
Hey, you made it for me.
Yeah.
You gotta go to work.